That these men are from God and they're gonna preach the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ. But what's the reaction of the people? They say the gods have come down amongst men. And Barnabas is apparently the older-looking one, or maybe the older one. So they call him Zeus, the father of the, sort of the Greek pantheon of gods. And they call Paul Hermes, because he's the chief speaker. Hermes is the messenger god. Sometimes we know them by their Latin names Jupiter and Mercury. But in any case, they have this idea that these men are some of their Greek gods, or the Greco-Roman gods, because the Romans took over the Greek gods in many cases, as well as gods of other nations. And really, this goes back to something that happened in Lystra in their history, at least according to legend. Their culture said that once upon a time, these gods, Zeus and Hermes, came to their town incognito. In other words, they were disguised. And in those days, they didn't have motel six, and so nobody was leaving the light on for them. You were expected that somebody would show you hospitality. And in many of those eastern countries in particular, hospitality is very important, right down to the present day. It's considered a great shame not to show hospitality. Well, imagine, in this Greek legend, the gods came down, they went looking for hospitality. Nobody gave them hospitality. No one opened their home, no one offered anything, except one older couple, who didn't have any children, called Philemon and Baalchus. And Philemon and Baalchus brought them in, and they were very poor elderly people. And they did what they could, they gave them the best food they had, they made them a little repast there in their home. And out of gratitude for their faithfulness, the gods made them temple keepers of their temple in the city of Lystra. And when they died, they transformed them into trees. And so reputedly, there were twin trees that you could go there to Lystra, maybe even in Paul's day, I don't know, and see these trees. And that was supposed to be Philemon and Baalchus. So imagine, now the apostles show up, or the missionary band shows up, and they do a miracle, they heal this lame man. And what do the people deduce? It's happened again. This is history repeating. The gods have come down to us in human form. Which of course was all wrong. But to compound that cultural misunderstanding, there was also a linguistic issue. Now, Greek was the lingua franca of the New Testament world. It was the language of diplomacy and commerce and education. So much like English is today, right around the world, all kinds of people study English. It doesn't mean they're fluent in it, but they at least study it. And I find when you're gonna go and buy something in Egypt, or in Israel, or in Peru, it's amazing how much English people know. They know their numbers, I'll tell you that much. And they know how to haggle, okay? Doesn't mean they can have a great discussion about abstract philosophy or something, but they understand dollar bill and so forth. You know, it's all about the Benjamins, as they say. But in any case, in any case, Greek was what English is today in that world that Paul goes around. So when Paul was speaking, he's speaking to these crowds mostly in Greek, although we know later, he speaks to the crowd at Jerusalem in Acts 21, or Acts 22 is actually the message, in Hebrew. And so, most of the time, he could use Greek. He also knew Hebrew. He may have known Latin. He knew Aramaic certainly, which is a cousin language to Greek. And there might have been other languages he knew, because he was a very well-educated man. But he obviously didn't know Liconian, and neither did Barnabas. So it doesn't matter, if you can speak Spanish, and French, and German, and Japanese, but you show up in a country where they speak Arabic, brother, you're out of luck. You know, you're not gonna understand what the people are saying very well. Although a few Arabic words made their way into Spanish and into Portuguese as well, thanks to the eight-hundred-year-long Ottoman occupation of the Iberian Peninsula. But I won't bore you with that history right now. In any case, think about these problems that missionaries still face to this day. That when they go to foreign countries, they've got to learn the local mindset, how people think, what is their culture? And how can we then explain the gospel to them? Don Richardson, a missionary, I think he was in Papua New Guinea. If it wasn't there, it was Indonesia. But he was a missionary back in the 50s or 60s. And he went to this tribe of people that was unreached, that had never heard the gospel. And he started explaining to them the gospel, and told them the story about Judas betraying the Lord. And when he got to the part of the betrayal in the Garden of Gethsemane, the people cheered. They thought it was wonderful. Judas was the hero of the story. And he found out, in their culture, they had all these blood feuds. And over the years, they had developed this culture that if somebody from your clan killed somebody from my clan, I had to retaliate. Except the really cool people in that society were the people that could come and befriend you. And they'd act like all was forgiven, and everything's nice, and they're your best friend. And they let you drink from their Coke bottle without even wiping off the top, you know? And they go to great pains to befriend you. And then, when you least expect it, when you're over at their house for some great feast of, you know, shawarma and falafel or whatever, then you turn around and you stab them to death, just in the moment that they're enjoying their food. And that's considered great in that culture. They would believe in that apocryphal Chinese proverb, that revenge is a dish best served cold. And so, when they heard the gospel, they thought, Judas, he's the hero. Jesus of Nazareth, forgive me, I say it reverently, but they'd view him as a loser. They'd think he's a chump for letting this guy trick him. When in fact, the gospels tell us the Lord wasn't tricked at all, was he? So Richardson was understandably aghast. And he decided, how can I explain the gospel to these people? And the more he got to know their language, and got to understand how they think, he found a custom they had, which he gets the title of his book from this. It's called Peace Child. And he found out that sometimes, if these tit-for-tat killings would go on too much, people would get sick of the bloodshed. And they'd wanna have peace. So what they'd do is, they'd take a newly-born child, or a young child, and they'd bring it from their clan to the other clan. And they'd say, now this is the peace child. You take care of the peace child. And that clan, who also wanted peace, they would take the peace child, and they'd take it into their homes, and they would raise that child like their own. And as long as that child lived, there was peace. Now, of course, a central fact of the gospel is that the Lord Jesus died for our sins. But we've been stressing in the book of Acts, that the Lord then rose again from the dead three days later, right? And what is the great truth of Jesus's resurrection? That our Lord merely was resuscitated? No. That he merely came back to life, only to die again later? No. Our Lord rose again in the power of an endless life. So he always lives. As he said in John 14, "Because I live, you shall live also." And that's where eternal life comes from. From the risen Christ, who ever lives, to use that work of salvation that he purchased at Calvary, and to act as our great high priest. And he found that concept of the peace child became his bridge for explaining, God has sent his peace child, the Lord Jesus Christ. And he's the one who brings this peace with God. I recommend that book, by the way, very interesting. And the sequel, Lords of the Earth, by Don Richardson, also very good. In any case, missionaries had to encounter things like this all the time, to try to explain the gospel in a way that people can understand. And it's not just missionaries. We here in North America have to do the same thing. Because increasingly, through immigration, and also through ignorance of the Bible, just people not reading the Bible, not being exposed to the Bible, we're encountering more and more biblical illiteracy. So we're having to define terms that a generation or two ago, people would have known exactly what was going on when you said redemption, sacrifice, resurrection. They may not know now, we may have to define our terms. It may be we're using the same language, literally, English, or the American variant of it at least, my Birdsboro version of it. But we have to use terminology that people can understand. We have to break down what we're saying, depending on whom the person is. So when Paul and Barnabas understood what was going on here, they didn't understand the language. But when they heard this, it says they tore their clothes in verse 14, and ran in among the multitude, crying out and saying, "Men, why are you doing these things? We also are men with the same nature as you, and preached to you that you should turn from these useless things to the living God." Notice how they describe God. "Who made the heaven, the earth, the sea, and all things that are in them." So they don't say, now look here, the Bible says that idolatry is wrong. You know, haven't you read Exodus 20, the Ten Commandments? Well, no, they hadn't. They didn't have the Bible. They didn't know about the Bible, probably. So he goes back to creation. And he says, "The living God, who made everything, he's the one who allowed bygone generations to walk in their own ways. Nevertheless, he did not leave himself without witness in that he did give, sorry, in that he did good, and gave us rain from heaven and fruitful seasons, filling our hearts with food and gladness." Now, not only is creation a powerful way to introduce the gospel to somebody. You know, saying, "Look at the stars. All those stars out there." You mean they came about just accidentally? These things that are in such regular orbits that astronomers for thousands of years have been able to predict certain things about them? And the more we probe into space, the more we send up satellites. You mean, the farther we look, the more we see? The Hubble Space Telescope, one time, they turned it to a dark area where they thought there was nothing, and they sort of let it do its thing in focusing over a period of time. And the picture it produced was of billions more stars than they knew. In fact, if you want an exercise in frustration, try to arrive at the estimated number of stars in the universe. You Google that, and it's very frustrating. Because I first did this in like 2003 or '04. And I Googled it, and I got one number from the late 90s. And then I read a couple of years later, they upped the number, you know? And then I read it a couple of years later, they upped it again. And they keep upping it. The estimate keeps going up. And we're talking about in the many hundreds of billions, probably. I mean massively large. And yet, you think that all happened by accident. And you think we're basically all there is, or we're top of the universe in our intelligence. I mean, there's gotta be a God of power. The heavens declare the glory of God, and the firmament shows his handiwork. But here, he puts a new wrinkle on it. It's not just creation, he says providence. Because here's a God who put us on a planet where we get rain with regularity, and the seasons, and the crops growing up. I mean, did you do that? Sure, you know how to put a seed in the ground, and you cover it over it, and then what do you do? Maybe you fertilize it a little bit. But that's about all you can do, other than perhaps periodically water it. You can't make that plant come up, you can't give that life, you can't make it grow a luscious orange that you're able to scarf down during a men's study session, or something like that. You know who you are. Anyway, you can't produce all this fecundity that we see on planet Earth. I mean, you know how the best scientists at NASA and other space agencies keep sending probes up to look at Mars, and rovers to land on Mars? And if they find some little teeny-tiny things that they think, "Oh, look at this, these are prehistoric water crystals." You know, thousands or millions of years ago, there were, there was water on Mars. And they keep looking around the universe, and water is in such short supply. Coal Ridge would have understood it. Water, water everywhere, and not a drop to drink, right? Water nowhere, when you look around our galaxy. When you look around at Mercury, and Venus, and Mars, and Neptune, and Jupiter, and Uranus. I still keep Pluto, by the way. But anyway, you look on their moons, you look on our moon, you don't find water. But what about planet Earth? Well, I don't know, it's something like three-fifths of the planet is covered by water, right? We've got tons of the stuff, we bathe in it for crying out loud. Now, imagine that, we're living on a planet that is just the right distance from the sun, that we don't burn up, and it's just the right distance that we don't freeze to death. We are living on a planet that really, although it has problems, and Romans 8 will tell us why those problems are, it's because of the fall of man. It's because of sin that we've brought into the world. And sin brings forth death, Romans 5 and James 1 would tell us. So we know why the world's messed up, and Romans 8 says it's groaning. So yes, there are problems in this world. But even the fallen world, even this world in its compromised position, it's somewhat broken. It still is capable of producing food and water for every being on this planet, humans and animals. And the only reason it doesn't, the only reason that the people starving, and people without good water, is because of mismanagement, or more often than not, man's cruelty to his fellow man. It's not because God created this planet deficient. When he created, it was good. And even after the fall, in his providence, God has maintained it. And Paul says here, "He did good, and gave us rain from heaven and fruitful seasons, filling our hearts with food and gladness." Not only a God who wants to keep us alive, but a God who wants us to be filled with gladness. Now, did you ever imagine that? I remember David Bowie saying, "Ground control to Major Tom, take your protein pills and put your helmet on." Well, that astronaut food isn't very appetizing. I mean, when I was a little kid, those space thoughts were pretty cool. But you know, you begin to learn, you'd rather have real ice cream from real milk in Wisconsin, or Vermont, or Canada, or somewhere, you know? Like, the good stuff. I like Turkey Hill down in Pennsylvania. You know, that's what I'm looking for, and what's mostly in our freezer for guests that come by. So come by for a scoop sometime. And maybe in a year, when I've lost a bunch of weight, I'll cheat and join you. But anyway. Yeah, God could have made all that food, like astronaut food. It'll keep you alive, it'll give you the vitamins you need, but it's not going to be anything you enjoy. But what does God give us? He gives us a veritable endless supply of combinations that we can eat. Now, I say a veritable endless supply, because I have a missionary stomach. Maybe I have two missionary stomachs, I'm not sure. But anyway, I have a stomach that I go to Peru, and I say, "Poyo a la brasa, a mí me encanta." I love Peruvian food. Give me that Peruvian roast chicken. Give me a steak with an egg on it, you know? I go to Ireland. Fish and chips, baby, give it to me, I love it. You know, bangers and mash, it's good. At Little Italy in New York, or many of the Italian restaurants in my part of the world, fettuccine alfredo, lasagna, spaghetti and meatball, Italian sausages. Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't do this, you guys are all getting hungry, except for John, who's grubbing out on the fruit over there. But you know, think of the variety. Thai food, Japanese food, Ethiopian food, Lebanese food, Egyptian food, Puerto Rican food, Dominican food, yeah, Mexican food, Spanish food, English, well, never mind. Anyway, let's just say there's a variety. All those spices, all those flavors. If something's not to your taste, don't worry. There's about 15,000 other things that you might be able to try in your life that you'll probably like. And where does this come from? Why does it taste good? Why do we have flowers and plants that not only go through that photochemical process of photosynthesis, and all of the transference within the atmosphere, and turning carbon dioxide, you know, getting rid of that, and producing oxygen, and all of those things? And yet, they not only do those chemical processes, but they're beautiful. You go to Longwood Gardens, you go to, you know, some of these great botanical gardens around the world, and they're not only functional, they're beautiful. And people that know how to arrange them, people that have that sense. I have a friend who runs the botanical garden in St. Andrews, Scotland, a brother in the Lord. And he went to school, got two college degrees to do this. And they do wonderful things in the way they put plants out, and combinations of flowers and trees. And you just can get a little idea of the kind of training Adam got from God in the garden. And Paul's here saying, "Think not only of the functionality, think not only of the goodness and faithfulness of God in giving you the food that keeps you alive, but think of how he wants you to have gladness." God isn't a tyrant in heaven who wants to mess up your life. I find that we do a pretty good job of that ourselves. That we as sinners are quite capable of wrecking and ruining our lives, and those of many people around us, if left to ourselves. God wants us to have what the Lord Jesus Christ called, "life, and life more abundantly." He said, "That's why he came." That we might have life and life more abundantly. But it's not our best life now. Pardon me, but that's false teaching, and a rubbish book, by the way. But never mind. When he talks about the abundant life, we're talking about that life that he defined this way, John 17:3. "This is life eternal, that they may know thee, the only true God, and Jesus Christ, whom thou hast sent." You see, eternal life isn't like a condominium plan. You know, you can go and purchase a condominium, one of those timeshare kind of things. And you know that next year this time, you can go down the list of the condominiums in your timeshare plan, and you can pick a place to go. You can go to Myrtle Beach, or you can go to the Outer Banks, or you can go to Miami, or you can go, you know, somewhere else. And in any case, you can go on some little vacation. But you don't enjoy it now. I mean, it's in the future, you think about it. And some people think that's what eternal life is. Well, I'll get that someday when I go to heaven, right? No, eternal life is a relationship with the living God through his Son. So the moment someone repents of their sin, and says, "God be merciful to me, a sinner. Forgive me, God, save me." The Lord gives us that eternal life, and we shall never perish, he says. And we begin that relationship that now starts here on Earth, and it goes all the way to heaven. And you know, as Pascal said, the great French philosopher and mathematician, and we might say proto-computer scientist, because you know, there's a language in computing called Pascal. And a lot of his theories, although he lived at the end of the 17th and beginning of the 18th centuries, a lot of his theories led to the development of modern computing. So Blaise Pascal, brilliant man, also a believer in the Lord Jesus Christ, part of the Genshinite revival movement that came out of the Catholic Church in France in those days. And Pascal said that every human being is created with a God-shaped hole in their heart that only Christ can fill. And that's what Paul's saying to them here. "You think these idols are gods?" Listen, that's bondage. "You need to know the living God who created all things, who made things not only to keep you alive and sustain you by his providence, but things that are beautiful, and that taste good, and that are enjoyable, because God wants you to have gladness. And the greatest joy of all is knowing this God." And with this saying, they could scarcely restrain the multitude from sacrificing to them. Now, enter stage left in verse 19, "The Jews from Antioch and Iconium," who again are demonstrating that zeal. We spoke about zeal without knowledge. These people definitely have it. They come, and they persuade the multitudes to stone Paul. Now, that's the end of a beautiful evangelistic opportunity. I mean, isn't it amazing, the rage of these people? They're not content having pushed them out of one city, they're gonna pursue them to another. Why doesn't Paul just lose it? And say, "That's it, forget about these people." Well, once upon a time, Paul pursued people to foreign cities too, you remember? He knew what it was like to be zealous in a wrong cause. To be all wrong in thinking you're doing God's will. So Paul stayed and suffered it. "Now they stoned him, and drug him out of the city, supposing him to be dead. However, when the disciples gathered around him, he rose up and went into the city, and the next day, he departed with Barnabas to Derby." That surely had to be supernatural. When they stoned you, and dragged you out of town, and left you for dead, you probably pretty well looked like you were dead. You were probably busted up pretty badly. You weren't just gonna get up and walk back into town. It was certainly the healing of the Lord that did this. Some people think maybe he was dead here. Some people conjecture that maybe this is when he went up to the third heaven that he speaks about in 2 Corinthians. But the text doesn't tell us that, so I'm not gonna say yea or nay, or weigh in on that. But here's the wonderful thing, they go back into the city, and verse 23, they say, it says there, "They preached the gospel to that city. They moved on to Derby, and made many disciples." Now, again, I would think that if I've been pushed out of Antioch in Iconium, I've been pushed out of the next place they come to, I've been pushed out of Lystra, in fact, they stoned me and left me for dead there, I'd think I'd be due for a vacation about then. Maybe I'd be thinking furlough, okay, in modern terms. But these men go right back to preaching the gospel. Now, that's the boldness that the Lord gives. And it's successful. "They made many disciples, and they returned to Lystra, where he was stoned, Iconium, and Antioch," strengthening the souls of the disciples, exhorting them to continue in the faith, and saying, "We must through many tribulations enter the kingdom of God." Now, if they didn't see living proof of that standing before them, those saints weren't paying attention. Because Paul says, "Let's go back and strengthen them and encourage them." This is not just, "Let's do the shotgun method and bombard them with gospel truth, and lead them to the Lord." I mean, that's great to get the seed out. But wherever possible, you wanna go back, and you wanna follow up those young believers, and build them up in the faith. You don't wanna just cut them loose back in the world, adrift. They're little babies, they're spiritual babies. And so they go back and they strengthen them. And it says, "When they had appointed elders in every church," verse 23, "they prayed with fasting, and they commended them to the Lord in whom they had believed." Now, this is the beauty of the New Testament church. That it doesn't require ongoing, hands-on work by the people that plant the church necessarily. There comes a stage when the believers know enough to carry on. It's amazing that this couldn't have been very much time, and these people weren't saved very long. But out of that group, they pick the ones that are the most mature, the most in keeping with the qualifications we read in Titus 1 and 1 Timothy 3. And they, guided by the Lord no doubt, recognize them here as elders, or appoint them as elders. So they set up, again, that local church's own church government. It's not going to be that now these churches are satellites of the mother church in Jerusalem, or in Antioch, from which these missionaries went out. These are gonna be autonomous local churches with their own government that is responsible to the Lord. And they commend them to the Lord. Now, in our day, I've never heard of churches being planted this fast, and elders being established this fast. And the apostles were able maybe to do some things that are beyond us. But in some parts of the world, they are planted pretty fast. In some parts of the developing world in particular, where people are poorer, they're way more open to the gospel. So you may see an assembly started very fast. And it may not take years to see elders raised up, because elders don't have to know everything right off the bat. I don't even know mature elders that know everything. But they have to be men who know the Lord. They have to be men that walk with him, men that know the book, and are committed to going to the book for those answers. So they raise up these elders in these churches, and they go back, exhorting them, that it's gonna be tough, it's gonna be through tribulation that they enter the kingdom. "And they prayed with fasting, and commended them, Lord in whom they believed." Then verse 24 says, "After they passed through Passitia, they came to Pamphylia." So they're basically reversing the journey now, going back to Antioch. Verse 26, "From there they sailed to Antioch, where they had been commended to the grace of God for the work which they had completed." So the church sent them out, it was really, as we remember, Acts 13:4 says, "The Holy Spirit sent them out. The church commended them to God and his grace." "Yes, Lord, you wanna take them out and use them elsewhere for this mission? We agree to that, we commend them to you, we send them out with it." And they send them out for the work which they did, and notice the accountability of the apostles when they come back. "Now when they had come," verse 27, "and gathered the church together, they reported all that God had done with them, and that he had opened the door of faith to the Gentiles, so they stayed there a long time with the disciples." Now, we're gonna find out tomorrow, that becomes absolutely vital. Now, we're gonna find out tomorrow, that becomes absolutely vital in defending the gospel. And that one of the great blessings to the church is when missionaries who have done a real work for God, men and women who've been mature in the faith, and followed the calling of the Lord, and gone out and worked for the Lord, and seen the Lord work through them, when they come back to the sending church, they can be an enormous blessing. And tomorrow, if the Lord leads, I might tell you a few actual incidents from modern church history, things that I even knew about and experienced to a degree myself, seeing missionaries come back, that is, who were used of the Lord in the home country. So, when I said that we send out our best and brightest, you might think, "Ooh, but we can't afford to spare these men. There's need in our church, there's need in our country." Amen, there's need everywhere, isn't there? It's just a question of where the Lord wants to put his servants. And these churches that sent out these gifted men, yes, they lost them for a time. But, they participated by extension in these other churches being established. And when the men come back, they're now able to bless the sending church in a way they couldn't before. But more on that tomorrow. Let's close in a word of prayer, and I'll, well, actually, some brother closes in a word of prayer. And please give thanks for the refreshments that we have.